Call to order, the regular city commission meeting for the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Commissioner Sobelock is joining us by audio this evening. First item on the order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. We'll move right into the order of business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the order of business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. There is no change to the order of business.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the order of business? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion on the order of business? Hearing no discussion, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Sorry about that, Suzy. Our next item up is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the commission wishes to discuss? Hearing no discussion, I'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobelock? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving into administration and finance. First item this evening, we have a proclamation. And this is a proclamation for Manufacturing Day in Dickinson. Whereas the City of Dickinson has a strong history as a community supporting manufacturing in the approximately fourteen hundred stable sustained jobs that manufacturers provide. And whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of innovation in our economy, and manufacturing firms fund most domestic corporate research and development, and the resulting innovations and productivity growth improve our standards of living. And whereas manufacturing also drives U.S. exports and is crucial for a strong national defense. Whereas many opportunities exist for Dickinson area residents to utilize their skills and talents in manufacturing in order to improve their lives and those of the loved ones. And whereas manufacturing diversifies the local economy, thereby bringing sustainability to the community. And whereas manufacturing is a significant creator of new wealth by the means of sales outside of our area and outside of our state. And whereas over twelve hundred North Dakota companies provide excellent careers in manufacturing for over twenty-six hundred people and are adding new jobs every day. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of the Board of City Commissioners of the City of Dickinson, do hereby proclaim October third, two thousand and twenty-three, as Manufacturing Day in Dickinson, and encourage all citizens to consider the positive impact of modern manufacturing on their lives and its contribution to the success of Dickinson, Stark County, North Dakota, and the United States of America. And before I read the last part of this, I see we have one of our prominent members from the manufacturing community that has come in. I think he would like to say a few words.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to say a word or two. You've pretty much said it, summed it up in that proclamation, but I'm here to ask for your support for area manufacturers. The community is home to several manufacturers who produce and sell products on a global stage. Together, we employ over fourteen hundred employees, and we're all growing. It's whether it's cabinets, aerospace parts, air separators, oil and gas, refined petroleum, or magic ring donuts, area manufacturers are creating great products and great career opportunities. On October third, our manufacturers are coming together to host our annual Manufacturing Day event at the BAC. Last year, six hundred and fifty area students attended the event about exploring manufacturing career opportunities. These would include welding, marketing, human resources, I.T., R&amp;D, engineering, accounting, manufacturer, or maintenance tech, and production assistant. I'm asking you to proclaim that resolution, proclaiming Manufacturing Day, October third, in Dickinson, North Dakota. And thank you for allowing me to come a bit late, I'm sorry, but thanks for allowing me to address you.
And Guy, could you just introduce yourself to the audience and to the viewing crowd?
My name is Guy Mosse, I'm president of Baker Boy.
Welcome here anytime. You guys do great things.
Thank you.
So. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal to be fixed. So Commissioners, I'd look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. All Commissioners in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you for your support.
Our next item up this evening will be a Dickinson High School Support Resolution. This will be presented by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Before you end, is a resolution in support of the Dickinson Public Schools Bond Referendum for expansion and improvements to Dickinson High School. The resolution states the following. Whereas the Board of City Commissioners finds that the proposed improvements in expansion of Dickinson Public High School will enhance education and the social economic vitality in the City of Dickinson in the southwest area, and will significantly promote and improve education for youth in the City of Dickinson. And whereas the Board of City Commissioners determines that it's necessary and in the best interest of the city to offer support of the Dickinson Public Schools Bond Referendum for the proposed improvements in expansion of Dickinson High School within the City of Dickinson. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of City Commissioners of the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, as follows. One, in support of the proposed improvements and expansion of the Dickinson High School, the City of Dickinson hereby offers its support for the Dickinson Public Schools Bond Referendum dated this nineteenth day of September of two thousand and twenty-three. This will be resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are looking for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the resolution? I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution twenty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-three in support of the school bond referendum, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
We caught you on that one, Suzy, so you're an aye for approval, so. Motion carries. Next up, we have Deputy City Administrator Carlson. She'll be presenting our monthly financial report.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So with the monthly financial report, the first one we start with is the treasurer's report to show what our working capital, working cash is for the total is around sixty-five million, which hasn't changed in the last couple of months. Also, to let everyone know that we are, have our interest rate on our cash accounts at three point two five percent. And with our cash, we have investments as of August thirty-first. This definitely has not changed, except for the interest going back into the CMA's and the pensions, so they're up just a little bit on that part of it, but other than that, the investments is done for the year. So with our one percent sales tax, it shows in August that we were up, we had an increase of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars over twenty-two and twenty-one, because you can see that the green line is twenty-three, the red line is twenty-two, and the blue line is the twenty-one. So both twenty-two and twenty-one at that time in August of those years were almost right on the dot, and then we are the green line above that. So with that, also with the half percent sales tax, we do show the same thing on that, showing that we do have a separate fund for both of them. In our seven years at eight months, it is showing that this is the highest in eight months over seven-year period of eighteen point five percent in our sales tax. Next one we have is hospitality tax. Again, that did come in higher than our previous years in August, and it's an increase of twenty-two thousand, seventy-three dollars over twenty-two. And with that hospital tax in the seven-year period, two thousand and twenty-three is the highest of the eight months, which is an increase of twelve point two, two-three percent on our hospitality tax. In occupancy, we received two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars over last year of twenty-two at the same time, but we are below in twenty-one on that portion of it. But in the comparison of seven years and eight months, this is the highest over seven years, and it's up fourteen point four eight percent. Our oil impact has been coming in steadily for the last seven months. In August, the total revenue was four hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven less than twenty-two, and slightly higher than two thousand and twenty-one. In the comparison over seven years, same time of eight months totals, it's the third highest, we are the third highest in this year over the seven years, but it's still, the revenue is nine point eight-three percent lower than twenty-two. Then to give a general fund revenue of the revenues and expenses, in August, we should be at sixty-six percent is the benchmark, and you can see that general fund revenues is come in on the green, a fifty-four percent, and then we are lower at the benchmark, a fifty-nine percent for the expenses. On the enterprise, the utility revenue is just about right where it should be, sixty-five percent to make the benchmark at sixty-six, and then the enterprise fund expenses at fifty-four, which is lower than the benchmark. And with that, I would take any questions on your detail or the monthly financial report and ask for an approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions on the monthly financial report? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobelock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item this evening is property abatement. It's presented by City Assessor Hirschfeld. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. I'd sent over an assessment report speaking to our exempt properties, how we, you know, think of exempt properties like city buildings, churches, DSU, our schools and that, but we also have properties that sometimes switch hands. Halliburton, you know, that becomes a teaching center now, the school bus bar, that'll be changing hands. So I just wanted to address some of the items regarding it and our prioritizing of keeping up those property record cards. Give you a little background data before we get into our properties being abated this evening. So if you have any questions regarding that, that's certainly entertaining now, or I can roll right into that abatement.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? May proceed.
Thank you. Mr. McNeil, McNeil Development had swapped properties with Southwest Health, and in so doing, he'd reviewed the value that the city had on that property, because it had been taxable at one time. It had sold prior for, I think, two point four million dollars, and we'd had two point two million before it went exempt. Because of it being exempt, and it was a property file, if you will, that we don't keep track of the exempt properties quite as closely, that value dipped to a million six. Mr. McNeil says he relied upon that as part of his transaction, and because of that, he's looking for a decreased value for his two thousand and twenty-two taxation. The value we had on that was two million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. He's seeking a value of one million, seven hundred thousand. The value of two million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand we have on it is a little less, like I said, the prior sale price was. If we look at being equitable with other properties, that value would be accurate. However, some of the hindsight being two thousand and twenty, some of the other issues with it being a larger office, medical-type use property, and there are some extenuating circumstances, so if the commission wanted to entertain a lower value, I did decrease that value to was a million, eight hundred thousand. After inspecting that property this year, there were some water damage to it, some other damage, so there was a decrease because of that. So if you were to entertain that value, that would be accurate as well, wouldn't be out of line, the million seven that the applicant's asking for, and the current market is probably not out of line either, but as I said, the existing value that's on it was accurate as of the time of the valuation, so.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Oderman?
Mr. Hirschfeld, what's the, what was the value on the most recent sale?
It was.
It was swapped, wasn't it?
Well, it was a swap on the most recent one, so.
Okay.
It was a swap.
I mean, you could put whatever you want on that. The prior sale, that was two point four million.
They swapped with the old true value building, Southwest, where Southwest.
But even in like a swap situation like that, there isn't like an assessment of the value so that during that swap?
I don't know what process that they went through, you know, if it's a cash-type deal.
Okay.
You know, they can put whatever consideration they think the property's worth without having an appraisal done on that.
Okay. So yeah, so we don't have an appraisal or anything that was done, okay, or one that we don't have a record of anyways.
So when you adjust the value, I mean, what kind of obsolescence did you put on this building since it's an empty office building for several, almost, what, a year plus?
There wasn't any obsolescence placed on it for vacancy yet, that I anticipate there will be some after the commercial revaluation. It was more towards the deferred maintenance that had occurred, if you will, with it being vacant, that we added obsolescence on for. You say vacancy could be a consideration, I mean, certainly, like I said, the hindsight, some of our larger properties, whether they be metal building campuses, large properties like that, large office buildings, we're starting to see that, you know, some obsolescence on those that require a larger apartment building, if you will, too, where, you know, our smaller shop buildings are selling above assessment, our larger ones aren't. We see that, you know, kind of with the offices, too. Smaller buildings are selling well, large ones not quite so much, but again, we have the hindsight to that, that we didn't have them, so the existing value's equitable, however, you know, certainly the market maybe was changing at that time, and it's like, it's not out of line to make a decrease either.
I maybe have a question for Commissioner Frederick. In a situation like this, you know, we've got an empty building that isn't being utilized really for anything, I mean, I think it's best for the community if some, something does move in there, does it make it more attractive for an investor to be able to, you know, see that valuation to where, hey, I'm only gonna have to pay this much in property taxes, maybe I can put a little bit more money into renovation and use, and bring it in online?
I mean, definitely a factor. I mean, anytime you're looking at a building, you wanna know what your upfront costs are gonna be in your monthly recurring costs, so. I mean, Mr. Hirschfeld, did he give you any idea where he came up with one point seven million compared to your one point eight-six million?
He did not, and I, you know, gave him the opportunity to come here and speak before he do, he just said, oh, let me know what happens.
So we have three options, Commissioners. We can leave it at the assessed two point one nine-one million, we can change it to the request of the owner of one point seven million, or change to staff's recommendation, Mr. Hirschfeld's recommendation of one point eight, one million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred.
I mean, I do look at, and we have two clinic buildings now that have been empty for many, many years. I mean, similar, one's a little bit obviously bigger, but I mean, that one's, the old Dickinson clinic's been empty, I don't know how many years now, five plus?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so you would think anybody that's looking at that is looking at probably this building as well, so if they're not selling, is the value right? I mean, I don't know. I mean, do you know what he has it listed for?
I did, off the top of my head, I was trying to remember, I think it was one point eight, maybe a start, and I, it's come down since, so he might be at a million seven now, which may be why he's asking for that. I haven't checked what his listing price is.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what you guys think. I mean, are you comfortable at the one eight-six-six? I mean, or you, or is he a bit closer at the one-seven? I mean, give me your honest opinion.
My honest opinion, I mean, the one eight-six-six was probably as accurate then as it is now, but I don't think we're out of line at one point seven. Probably, you know, it, it's this question we've had in the downturn is, how much obsolescence do you need? There's just that lack of data that's out there. I mean, we're probably looking at a change of use for this one. You brought up the other clinic as well. You know, if there was adequate medical staff available, they'd probably fill up, the demand is there, but without the staff, there's no demand for the building.
I mean, if you would add some obsolescence to this for it sitting empty for, I mean, what kind of, I mean, what would that amount to?
If we're putting obsolescence on this, and I, we probably won't be far off, I would have spoke to Vanguard to see if they've got an idea of value, I put thirty percent on a couple of our larger metal building properties, and I think it's, we're what, twenty percent on our large apartments, so if we're in the twenty to thirty percent range off of this, we're probably pretty close. So off a mill, two point two, what does that put us at, one-six, one-seven, so.
So, Mr. Hirschfeld, you kind of alluded to this, like the one point seven wouldn't, wouldn't give you a large amount of heartburn?
I don't, won't have any heartburn on this property, and if it helps them sell it, it just helps Dickinson, so. And you alluded to that earlier.
I mean, I have a feeling obsolescence is gonna get added to this next year anyway, so.
Yeah.
Unless it sells or fills up, obviously, but.
I would make a motion to approve the abatement request at that one point seven million-dollar valuation.
I have a motion to approve the request of the owner at one point seven million by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? I only just have one comment, and, Mr. Hirschfeld, I hope you stay till, for later, because I do have a letter to read from an owner, so I could use some insight on this letter. My only concern is, we lower this to one point seven, and then somebody does buy it, and then we come back in and we, now we assess it at two point one, and then we'll have another letter.
Well, if that's the letter I've seen before, there were changes made to that property either.
Right, but I guarantee there'll be changes made to this building, too, so. I'm just saying, I just like your insight for later when I have to read this, so. Not that I'm opposed of doing this, I just that people are aware of the situation when we do this, so. So we do have a motion to approve the request of the owner by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions? Not will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobelock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Our next item up, we have the Czech Museum Memorandum of Understanding, and this will be presented by Museum Director Furman. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. Tonight, the Memorandum of Understanding that's brought forward is due to the Czech group, Czech Heritage Incorporated, approaching us and asking for some help in ensuring the long-term viability of the Czech museum and its associated collection. They, quite frankly, came to me and said, we are worried that we are just literally going to die out, because we're getting older, and we're not getting a lot of younger members. And so they were looking at some way to guarantee the future of both the building and the museum collection that they've gathered over the years. So what's been put together, this Memorandum of Understanding actually consists of two parts, which were crafted by Attorney Winko, and one is a bill of sale, and the other is a rental lease document. We currently are responsible for the grounds around that building, as we are of all the grounds in Prairie Outpost Park, and it is always, at least from two thousand and sixteen, I think, is the determinant date that I was able to come up with, since two thousand and sixteen, the city has been responsible for the maintenance of all the buildings in the park, save for the three that are associated with the ethnic groups. That was the Stavur with the Scandinavian group, the Czech building, and then also the Germans from Russia. Well, a few years ago, the Sons of Norway group, local chapter, did go out of existence, and the city became de facto owners of the Stavur building and assumed full care of it. And this is what the Czech group wanted to avoid, is kind of leaving things out in limbo, and so approached us and talked about the issues associated with this in terms of, they were afraid also that besides the group aging out, that also they wouldn't have the dollars to keep up the property in the way they've been able to since they built it in two thousand and one and opened it in two thousand and two. The associated cost for the building are utilities, maintenance, and primarily, the utilities are split right now. The city covers all the electricity in the park. The Czech building has propane heat, and they have historically covered that cost. So they were asking for relief from that, and then also assistance with the maintenance of the building. In discussions with the Czech board and with the assistance of Attorney Winko, to help them handle this, it was suggested that they deed over the physical building to the city and then lease it back throughout the rest of their group's lifetime. Christine, is there anything you want to add to that description?
I think Mr. Furman has summed it up pretty well.
Okay, thank you. So the, the bill of sale is a non-cost item. It simply turns over the ownership of the building itself to the city. The city's always owned the land that it's upon, and then the lease is a five-year lease with a hundred dollars a year cost to the Czechs, and the Czechs would also have use of the building to maintain their museum collections within it. Also, within the lease agreement is a dissolution clause. Should the Czech Heritage Incorporated group go out of existence, the museum collections would revert to the Dickinson Museum Center, in other words, the City of Dickinson's care, to be kept in perpetuity associated with that Czech museum building. And so that's where we're at right now. I think it prudent for me to mention that we're hearing the same type of things from the Germans and Rus, from Russia group, in that they are also fearing that they are gonna age out, and suddenly there'll be no one there to take care of the building that they painstakingly constructed, and the collection that they painstakingly gathered.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Furman. Any questions for Mr. Furman on this title change or the lease agreement with the Czechs, which I assume we'll be getting a check?
Little bit of levity, I like.
Ha-ha. So any questions, comments on the rental or the title change, the bill of sale, which is zero cost to the city? And I'm sure the propane costs are minimal, too.
With the hundred dollars they'll be paying in lease, payment a year, probably it's gonna be to about the four hundred dollar range. Usually, they refill almost every two years at about eight hundred dollars. They don't use it a lot during the winter. Primarily, they'll go in for a couple of meetings over the winter, they may do a little baking, which is always a good thing for them. That means that they've got something going on that they're gonna be taking food to. Primarily, they'll, they'll go in for a couple of meetings. Over the winter, they may do a little baking, um, which is always a good thing for them. That means that they've got something going on that they're gonna be taking food to. Um, but the heating costs really aren't more than that annually. Oh, just another, uh, point on the lease, that they will be, um, would be, under this agreement, be securing renters' insurance to protect their materials and the museum collections that are in the building. That museum collection would not transfer title to the city until such time as Czech Heritage Incorporated dissolves, if and when.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
No, but I'd move to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Furman.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
It is 5 o'clock, so we'll move into the public hearing and public comments section. First item up, first public hearing is our Chapter 2 Code Amendment. This will be presented by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Enclosed in your packet is consideration for ordinance, second reading 1784, and I do want to go through this a little bit more thoroughly than we did the first time. I also prepared a PowerPoint so that we can walk through this, so if there's any questions for the commission, as well as any city officials, of course, and also for explanatory purposes for anyone in the public.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So currently, the city code specifically states, and we're, and I'm referring to 21210, which requires that the Board of City Commissioners at their first meeting after their qualification or soon thereafter as possible, shall appoint the following officers, and then it lists various, uh, city positions. I would say primarily department heads, also requires, uh, the appointment of city policeman, city engineer, and other officers or boards, as the Board of City Commissioners may deem necessary. And also allows for the dispensing of any such offices in its judgment are unnecessary and provide for the duties shall be performed by other officers or board, uh, dependent upon the, the termination of the Board of City Commissioners. And in visiting with city staff and, and getting a, a good understanding of what the city has done in the past, uh, and I had an opportunity to visit with the city staff, who's been here a lot longer than I have, to determine whether the city had actually been going through this process in the reappointment process. And the resounding answer was no, the city had not been doing it. And this, this goes back decades. And it got me to thinking, why would we appoint and reappoint a person who has sat in that position potentially for a decade or more? Uh, for example, if you look at our long-term serving, uh, city officials, um, Mr. Zurov has been our Public Works Director for nearly 10 years. Uh, Ms. Carlson's been with the city for seven. Uh, Mr. Dossinger's been there for a very long time, if you include his in time with the Dickinson Police Department. So practically speaking, the reappointment process seemed to be ceremonial in nature. And the fact remained, the city wasn't doing that. And so the question became, do we continue to follow this process that we haven't been following, or do we come up with a better way that's, makes it more practical with regard to these positions? And so what I did was reached out to various city attorneys across the state, talked to a lot of them who are home rule cities, spoke to the League of Cities, I also spoke with the Attorney General's Office, to figure out what was the best practical solution for this potential rewrite of the city's code. And the Dickinson Municipal Code only has a reference of oath of office, um, and to get to that point in two places. One for the fire chief and one for the public health official. I cannot here, sit here and say why those two positions are specifically called out, but that's just the current reality of how the code is drafted. So there isn't a specific code section in the municipal code that requires any appointed official to sign an oath of office. That is a requirement in the century code, but it's not a requirement in our current code. So with that being said, in discussions with the Attorney General's Office, the city as a home rule city does have the authority under Article 3, and I'll, I'll provide that here. But basically, the city can provide for city officers, agencies, and employees their selection term, power, duties, qualifications, and compensation. The city also has the ability to provide for change, selection, or creation of its form and structure of government, including its governing body, executive city, executive officers and city officers. And that is currently what our current home rule charter allows and requires. So in this process to determine what might be a better workable solution, I did reach out to various other cities across the state, home rule cities, as I had mentioned, and visited with their city attorneys and also took a look at their codes. And I think it's important as we look and help to determine how we are going to evaluate Dickinson's code, to look at what other cities are also doing and how it may affect what we want to do. So for example, the city of Bismarck has appointed officials. They have a city health officer, a city attorney, city administrator, fire chief, police chief, and city engineer. They have in their codes, the city health officer and the city attorney hold specific terms where the other appointed city officers are actually governed by civil service. And their code specifically requires appointed officers to sign an oath before or upon the discharge of their duties. Let's take a look at the city of Williston. The city of Williston actually makes a distinction between appointed officers and retained appointed officers. They actually only require appointed officers as the city attorney, the city assessor, and any other offices as the board deems necessary. They classify their retained appointed officers as the finance director, the economic development director, the development services director, chief of police, city engineer, public works director, fire chief, city administrator, human resources director, and the PSAP director. The retained appointed officers can only be removed by a four-fifth vote of the commission upon finding of good cause. The Williston City Code does not require an oath of office for appointed or retained appointed officers. Let's take a look at Grand Forks. Uh, Grand Forks, their appointed officers hold their position until the expiration of their term or until a successor has been appointed. Their appointed officers take an oath before the person enters upon the discharge of their duties. And the only appointed positions that Grand Forks specifically identifies is the city auditor, the city assessor, the city attorney, and the city engineer. Let's take a look at Fargo. So Fargo has a very long list of appointed officials. In addition, we've got the superintendent of streets, the superintendent of garbage utility, the city forester, the personnel director, the auditorium director, the executive secretary of the Board of City Commissioners. Those are also included positions. Their code actually says that the appointed officer shall be appointed for indefinite periods, subject to the laws of the state of North Dakota and the civil service ordinances. Their code does require a, an appointed official to sign an oath before entering the discharge of their duties. Let's look at the city of Minot. The city of Minot has appointed officials, and the only individuals that qualify under that classification are the city manager, the city auditor, the finance director, the city attorney, the city assessor, city clerk, and the director of public works. And Minot does not require appointed officers to sign an oath, only elected officials. So, so what does this mean as we evaluate what we want to do for the city of Dickinson? What it says to me is that home rule cities have a vast amount of discretion to determine what positions are classified as appointed, how the officers are appointed, how long the officers are or remain appointed, and whether an oath is required. So that brings us back to what our code says. And as I mentioned, visiting with the city employees that have been here for a lot longer than I have been, it doesn't make sense to me practically that the city would continue to appoint individuals in certain capacities that have held those positions for a very long time. So the proposed change would be removing the requirement that you appoint at every new organizational meeting those same positions. Because we haven't been doing it, and it doesn't make sense to continue to have something in code that we're not following. And the thought process being is those positions remain until they are removed or essentially civil service provisions kick in. They're resigning, they're retiring, they're terminated, and so forth. So what we would do is we would classify those non-appointed city officers as the following. Treasurer, auditor, city attorney, assessor, public works director, fire chiefs, chief of police, city engineer, and any other individuals that the Board of City Commissioners deem necessary. And it will be up to you to determine how long you want those appointments to last. My recommendation is that those appointed positions remain appointed until they are, um, their term expires or until a replacement is filled. Um, that would make more sense to me so that we don't have to continue to bring these individuals back in to be reappointed to a same position. In addition, what we're also suggesting or, or proposing is that we classify the certain individuals basically as employees in the last slide. So that these individuals would be employees for the purpose of moving forward. Our code also provides that all of these employees, except for the city administrator, are governed by civil service regardless. So classifying them as non-appointed city officers, and then we also have a change as well, that we would add a section that would designate who we consider appointed city officers. Uh, we still need a public health officer. Uh, the city isn't going to employ a physician to fill that role, so obviously we need to have someone there. My understanding is that that is done in conjunction with Southwest District Health, and they have a physician on their board that serves in that capacity. So I think it's still important that we require that as a, um, a position that's appointed. So what does that all mean? Um, that, as it's currently drafted, that does not preclude or prevent any department head from requiring certain employees or this commission to take an oath of office, for example, police officers. It removes the requirement for the formal appointment process at every new organizational meeting. And this would require, in, in my opinion, would be more consistent with how the city staff and, and these off, city officers have perceived these positions for many years. The other thing that we would consider, um, again, it's completely up to you as the commission if you choose, I think the more important thing, and, and it's kind of a two-step process. First, you decide what you want those appointed positions to be. Then you decide how we make them appointed. And then if you decide that you want to require any sort of oath, then we can certainly make that part of the code. That's not something that's currently there, but it can be added. There are, again, cities across the state that require it as part of their code. Ours currently does not. So it's really o- open for your, um, discussion on how you want to treat that and how you would like to, um, proceed moving forward. I would say that depending on, you know, discussion about how you, um, the commission would like to proceed, I would say that of the code sections that I have read and, and which ones I would like to probably steal from, I would say that Grand Forks code that requires those pointed positions to remain in place until their successor is appointed seems more in line with what we have done anyway. And I think the thought process would be, and what I'm reading for the cities that require the oaths, is that they have them signed at the inception of their employment. So it's not something that you come back every year and you have them sign a new oath, it's just done when they are hired. So, um, if you have any questions for me, I would be more than happy to answer them, but that's the current, uh, status of, of the proposed changes. Um, and the only thing I would say is, again, I would just want some input from the commission as far as what you would like to see for that term of that appointment, and we can certainly, um, add that in as well. And I would stand for any questions or comments that you have as commissioners.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Winko?
Mr. President?
Commissioner Baer?
More, more of a comment than a question. Um, I wish I knew you were gonna do a PowerPoint. You would've saved me a lot of time and energy with all the research I did, because I knew nothing about this. So, um, I decided I needed to find out where I could get that information, so I contacted Stephanie, who is the attorney of the League of Cities. And I asked her about this, and she told me that because we are a commission, it makes our city the home rule charter. She, so she explained to me that our role of government is different than the role of government of a city that is council members. Which means they, they do have to do things much differently than we do. I got the instruct, or the opinion after talking with Stephanie, that she was surprised that we hadn't done this up to this point. And she had in fact told me that the other cities, Fargo, Minot, uh, Williston, and Grand Forks and Bismarck already had. So I looked into that. So now you, so everything you said here reinforced a lot of what I saw. So it's more or less, we're, we are trying to bring our century code up to match where, where it should be, uh, today. Is that correct?
Commissioner Baer, I think that's a, a very good assessment, and, and I do appreciate you doing your own research on that and, and getting that information. There are a lot of things in our code that are antiquated, and we only get the opportunity to really address these when the issues arise and the issue arose. And so it's one of those things where we're taking an opportunity to be practical about the decision and get up to speed with what others are doing. And to me, like I said, to have a meeting every other year when we get a new commission to reappoint our same city officers that have been very dutifully serving their roles, um, in these positions, just doesn't make a whole lot of practical sense. And so, um, i- it just is a way to get us more modernized, to get us up to speed with everyone else. And that's the appointment process. Now, the oath is something completely different. It's, it's still kind of tied together, but it's separate. And, and that's something that you all can decide you feel is appropriate for you to, to do. And the options are there. You can certainly require it or not. That's, that's completely up to you. You have the option. If you want to require it, we just build it in. It, it's not that big of a deal to put it in. And, and if you just choose to leave it out, we leave it out. But that's why you guys get to make that decision.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Oderman?
I, I would, I would tend to agree with you, uh, Dr. Baer, and I really appreciate you, um, your comments, because I, I really think that what we're doing here is we're codifying what we're already doing. And, and, I mean, this has been the practice for, for decades, and, um, you know, unfortunately, our, our code didn't keep up with our, our practice. I, I, I would like to speak, though, to, um, like, the, the practice of appointing every year. I, I mean, you, you think about, um, do we really want to have our city staff sweating every year, "Hey, am I gonna be reappointed this year?" Um, and from a job security standpoint, a- and just from that standpoint, a lot of these positions, we go through a, an extensive hiring process and an interview process to make sure that we're hiring the ri- right person for these roles. And, um, to, to, to just be able to willy-nilly just not reappoint them, I, I, I think that, I mean, the way that we're approaching these is that they're hired positions. And I, and I like the, the use of non-appointed. Um, I'm, I'm curious as to why we're not just using hired. Um, but I'm sure that's some legal practice that, that's just what we use, but.
And Commissioner Oderman, I, I do want to follow up with that. Um, whatever term you choose, it's just vernacular we can come up with, but that goes back, your comments actually lead me back to another, um, point that I want to make, because by our own city code, if you would ask a city employee what they think an appointed position is, they would likely say, a majority would say, that they're hired or appointed. appointed and not appointed at the whim of the city commission. And our code actually does not provide for that, nor does century code. Because even as an appointed position, you still have a protected property right with the right to a hearing. So, to call these positions appointed when they actually are governed by civil service with that protected employment right, it also goes one step farther to say it's not making any sense. And so, again, another reason why calling these positions what they are makes more sense than using old vernacular and doing it the old kind of fashion way.
I, I, I'm sorry. When I talked to Stephanie, she did bring up that point you just made because we have a civil service, we don't have to do this. And we'll go through that first. There's a process. So, what you just said is exactly what she told me. So, yeah.
Mr. President, I think a lot of the stir has been with the oath. I mean, I don't know about the rest of you. I don't have an issue with an oath.
May I approach the bench?
No. There will, right, you'll have your time.
Thank you.
I thought this was for public comment, not for...
It is for public comment. I will open the public comment, Mr. Tuttle.
Or is we the people from the week to then?
You will have your opportunity.
As far as the oath, which seems to be the sticking point from what I've gathered off of social media, to have them take an oath when we hire them or that position is replaced, I don't think is an issue. I mean, I think we do it on a lot of positions already, so.
Yeah, I would agree.
I mean, but to do it every year? I mean, we don't take an oath every year when we're elected. I mean, most government positions don't take an oath every year. I mean, if they have a term of four or six years. So, to do it every year just seems not necessary.
I would agree with you, Mr. Commissioner Frederick. If you want to require it, and again, I don't think there's any city official that's currently hired by the city that would disagree with taking one. It's whether you want one or not. I think that if you look at Grand Forks, what theirs provides, and any one of these, we can model this after. But theirs provides that those persons elected or appointed to municipal office as provided thereafter, before the person enters upon the discharge of their duties thereof, shall take and subscribe the oath of office prescribed for civil officers and shall file the same with the city auditor within 10 days. If you want something like that in the code, we can absolutely build it in. Just let us know. If you want it in there, it can be put in there. It's not in there now, but it can certainly be added. It's not something that the city has required in the past. But, again, we're making updates. We're bringing up to speed what you all feel is important and prudent, so you tell me.
So as of right now, the only positions that require in city code an oath of office are the elected officials?
Correct. And the fire chief and the public health officer.
Okay, so by ordinance, so those are the only ones that are required. So we're actually going over and above with the other oaths of office that we're applying right now.
Correct. You would be doing something in addition to what's currently not in city code.
And I don't think anybody here is saying, "Let's remove oath of office for those other positions we've done oath of office for." For example, Mr. Dossinger did one when he became city administrator.
And I would imagine Mr. Siani took an oath of office, but he became the police chief.
Captain, or Chief Siani's had an oath of office for as long as he's been a police officer. So, and he recently took one again when he was appointed and hired as the position of the chief of police.
And so like what we have in front of us here really doesn't say anything about oath of office.
It doesn't. If you want to include it, then I would amend the ordinance to include it so that there isn't any ambiguity about whether it's required or not.
And we'd be just talking department heads.
Yes. So, for example, now, some, I think the question remains, you, you all get to decide who you want those individuals to be. If you want just the department heads, we can list them. You know, some of the cities only have a select few listed. Fargo has a lot listed. It's really up to you. So currently, right now, for the, what the city has listed, it would be...
But, but this commission, I mean, really only directly hires the top level staff.
Correct.
So if the department head that takes the oath wants his people below him to take an oath, that, that should totally be up to him.
I agree. That's an operational decision he can make.
Correct.
I mean, because we only hire the executives of the city. We're not hiring the garbage man or the, I mean, even the patrol officer, which obviously they take an oath, we know that. But, I mean, I mean, that can be left to the department heads of his subordinates below him when they, he hires them or she hires them, take an oath of office. I mean.
Correct. I don't think that, based on the codes that I've read across the state, we're only talking oath of office for those higher level employed positions. City engineer, city attorney, city administrator, the department heads. Anything below that, there's nothing that I can find in any of the other codes that require any other subordinate positions to take those oaths. And then also to, like I said, you can, you can build that in. You can make that look however you choose. But I would say that if you're going to require it and you want to go above and beyond what's currently listed, that it's, it's just done at the inception of the employment. There's only one other, and let's just use the police department as an example. They have required their police officers. Anytime we hire any new officer, they come in this commission, they're sworn in, they sign an oath in front of you. That process is not changing. We've, we've, we feel that's very important. And we're not going to change that process. There's only other, I think Fargo was the only other municipality that I could find that specifically references in code that their oath of office are signed by police officers. And there's a separate code section for that. But we, for the purpose of this discussion, would just be talking about those higher level department head type of positions.
But what we have in front of us says nothing about oath of office.
Correct.
Correct. Good. So, I just want to be clear about that.
Correct.
So really, if we move the fire chief, because he's an executive, and make him take an oath when he gets hired, that would only leave the public health officer as a possibly appointed position?
Correct. Because, again, the city isn't going to hire a physician to fill that role. It has to be appointed practically and we need a public health officer.
So cleanup, and that's handled by South with District Health. So for cleanup, we're going to have to appoint whoever they have and
Right.
At some future meeting.
Yes. So we would, we would still do that. And we can certainly, and if you want, and that's again, another discussion. If you want me to adjust it or modify it so that those positions still remain appointed until they're essentially disqualified or there's a successor appointed, I think the question to you, Commissioner, is do you want to just kind of get rid of that formal reappointment process every other May? Because if you do, then I can modify this again to just kind of remove that. So, Southwest District Health and its physician are going to remain our public health officer until otherwise. You know?
Till that person changes.
Correct. Exactly.
Yeah, because I mean, I think we've had the same public health officer for
Well, I think the coroner used to be for a while. And then Public, Southwest Public Health took on that role. So, I think the, what we should do is put into the code that what we, what our intentions are for like police officers, city administrator, heads of department to swear an oath. Like we have been doing, we just make sure it's in there, you know? But doing it every year would be ridiculous. I spent 21 years, four months and 17 days in the Army. I re-enlisted five times. You know how many times I swore an oath?
Five times? Six times?
Six times. I didn't get sworn in every year. I know what my duty is. I know what my role is. So, that's what we, how we've been conducting ourselves here. Because when we get new police officers, we swear them in. When we get a police officer that's been promoted, they get sworn in because they're in a new role. What we're going, you know, to go forward with is what we've been doing with commissioners. We swear in commissioners. We swear in the city administrator, and I think we should swear in the, the department heads. So, if that's, I mean, okay with commissioners, I think that's the way we should do it. But I don't, I, you know, and if an apartment head wants to, like Commissioner Frederick says, require that of their their individuals within their department, so be it. But we're in charge, basically, and Mr. Dossinger in charge of all the executives, the directors. So, any other comments, commissioners?
I agree and concur with what you just said.
I mean, that could, like Mr. Dossinger's situation, when he took city administrator, he would take an oath even, because he's moving to a different position. I mean, but it's a one-time thing until he leaves and we replace him. So, just to do it every year just seems monotonous for, absolutely for no reason. So.
So what I'm hearing is that the board would like to move forward with potentially amending this to include that requirement. So what I'll do is, like I said, I've, I've, I've got all the codes from every other city in front of me, so I will amend that and I'm not sure if I'll put a separate section in there, but for the elected versus the appointed, but I will bring back a revised ordinance that will specifically require that just for purposes of further discussion. Of the list of who is on there, just going through here, just please correct me if you don't want any of these individuals listed. Treasurer, which technically is governed by the city administrator position. City auditor is Mr. Dossinger in that position. City attorney, assessor, city assessor. Public works director, fire chief, police chief. City engineer, any other in positions that you would want.
Well, we have public works.
But would we, there's my next question. I do have a question. Contracted positions, like obviously your position, or when we did not have a city engineer and we contracted with, I mean, we're not going to ask them to swear an oath. I mean, we're hiring them as a consultant, so.
Yeah. You know, I think that's up to you. I mean, personally, if it, if it was me, I, I honestly, in a contracted position, because I'm the only one that applies to, if you asked me to sign one, I'd sign one. It doesn't affect my ability or my obligations professionally and responsibly to you as the city. But that's, again, up to that individual to make that assessment. Some other contracted employees might feel different.
I guess I don't care either way. It just seems...
I think since we're hiring, I mean, using taxpayer dollars, we should just require it.
Sure.
So.
Okay.
All right. Any, any other, any other thing that we want to end? I mean, we're going to get public, public input here, so there might be some more. We might, so, commissioners are done?
This is Suzie. I just agree with,
Go ahead.
I agree with what's been said, that, I agree with what's been said so far. I feel that the appointed positions should be appointed until further if the position is changed. So I agree with what you guys have said. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sobelik. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come forward, please come forward.
Hi. First of all, my first question to you commissioners is...
Could you please enter?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do what?
State your name.
Oh, my name is Bobby Joe Helgason.
I'm Charles Tull.
I want to, I just have to ask you commissioners a question. Who do you guys work for? Who hired you and how did you get into your positions?
We're elected by the public.
By the people?
Yes.
Okay. Can you answer another question for me? Do you four have your oath of office and Suzie? Do you guys all have an oath of office on file?
We do.
Yes.
Is it current?
And when I got re-elected, I was sworn in.
When I got re-elected, I was...
By the city administrator.
Okay.
I was sworn in also.
Let me, let me say one thing too.
Okay.
There was two, several misnomers that were being stated. First of all...
Can you, can you state your name?
It's Charles Tull.
Okay.
No, Minot.
Couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. First of all, I'm an expert on home rule charters. Ms. Winkle is very familiar with me because we brought a petition to her under the home rule charter and she passed it around to every city and every township in North Dakota, even though it was only pertaining to the city of Dickinson. Home rule charters can supersede state law. Only when they're not in conflict with state law. What she didn't tell you, and what she's misleading you about is, there is state law pertaining to oath of offices. And when there isn't an oath of office, it is a vacancy. And I'm going to tell you how we got to this point. We did open records to Ms. Winkle. And Ms. Winkle responded to us in an email saying she wasn't required to have an oath in office. So then we sent it back to her with a century code where it says appointed and elected officials have to have an oath of office. So what does Ms. Winkle do? She provides us with an oath of office dated that date. And I'm going to tell you, folks, I'm an expert. That is theft of office. These offices are owned by the people. They're not owned by, by the people working in them. The people working in them are just the servants for the people. And that position they've been given is owned by the people. When you try and deceive, there was no authority. We have about four or five oath of offices. So what must have happened that day? They scurried around the office and said, "We got to get your oath of office. We got to get your oath of office." No one had the authority to give that oath of office. So we got a real problem. Now we got, what I would say, I don't want to use the word, but it's actually a group of people working together to deceive the public as far as oath of offices. And we've got it all here. We've got it in the emails. So we have a little bit of a problem. And I'm just trying to say, when you, when you talk to the League of Cities, when you talk to the Association of Counties, they don't work for the people. They're working for who pays their members, even though our tax dollars pay that. Sometimes the advice they're giving you is not very good advice. Because the century code is where we have to go for the law when it's not in your, in your home rule charter. So if it's not in the home, for instance, I'm, I'm doing a petition in Williams County. In that, in the home rule charter, it doesn't say that the three people can sponsor it. Doesn't say anybody. So guess what? We have to then go back to state law. State law says we have to have 25. Even though that's not, that's not normal for a home rule charter. But because it's not in the home rule charter, then you have to use state law. You can't just create this. You're creating something here. You can't, you don't have the authority to create. Because it's already in the century code. And unless you go to the vote of the people for it, you can't create it. I'm just telling you that. Bobby, take over.
All right. So you all said you had an oath of office on file? Scott Decker.
Let's not use names.
Well, I want to tell them.
I know, but let's...
They need to be approached, Charles. Stop. Scott Decker, you, you have an oath of office. Yours is current. Linda Carlson, I believe you signed his oath of office. Linda Carlson, you have an oath of office here that you just signed, August 21st, 2023. How were you able to sign his oath in office when you didn't even have an oath yourself? Never had an oath. Now, listen. Listen. Suzie Sobelik. Her oath is good. Linda Carlson, again, how were you able to sign her oath of office when you didn't have an oath of office? Robert Baer. Your oath is good. You were signed by the president of city commission, and I can't read that. It must be Scott Decker, huh? Is that Scott Decker? So you're good. Christina Winko. Your oath of office was signed August 21st, 2023. And look it. It was signed by the city administrator. Who the city administrator is? Dossinger. Dossinger, when did you sign your oath of office? August 21st, 2023. How were you able to sign her oath when you didn't even have an oath of office? Joe Hurstfield. He's our city assessor. He signed his oath of office August 21st, 2023. Jason Frederick, you said you had an oath of office. When did you sign your oath of officer? When did you get elected and appointed? You were, you were elected in 2016?
Originally.
Originally. And then when did you get re-elected again?
Twenty-two.
Was it, yes. Your oath of office was signed 2018. I think I hit everybody. So the only ones that technically have an oath of office is Baer. Well, technically, yeah, Dr. Baer, Scott Decker, and Suzie. But like I said, Linda Carlson signed him. How was she able to sign them when she didn't even have an oath of office?
He was their city administrator at that time.
She was a city administrator?
Yes, she was.
Deputy city administrator?
No, she was the acting city administrator.
Which requires an oath of office.
And we're not, we're not here, this is not to be, he said, she said, but it's frustrating when we're trying to work with people and we're, now, we, we, we didn't know about this till we heard in the news, we've been working behind the scenes, we're not trying to make trouble for people, the oath of office is so important, and we're now minimizing it because people have been caught not having it. And we're, we're, the oath of office is our sacred word to the people that elect us, and I, I, I trust that all of you guys are sincere in your positions, you're not dishonest, but I'm gonna say there's some people that are undermining what we have to do to, you know, the more and more I listen to this, the more and more I realize that everybody working for city government should take an oath of office. And I'm just saying that, because when we minimize what this it means, if you go back to the, the Dakota Territories, the oath of offices, they meant stuff, you didn't go against your word, and you, and we're not, no one, for her to sit there and say to you guys every year, no one's even, even brought that up, I don't know why I keep hearing that, it's spin, I hear spin from her, no one brought up every year, every time you're reelected, it is a new government. The legislature, every time, every sixty-third, sixty-four, sixty, this was the sixty-eighth legislative session, it's a new government, everyone has to take an oath of office because it's a new body, it may have one different person in it, but it's a new body, it's a new government, and that's why you have to take an oath of office for a new government. And I know that there are some people that just, and it's understandable, that you took an oath of office, you think it's there, but it requires in the century code that you take it each and every time, and the century code is very explicit, if you don't, there is a vacancy, and that vacancy cannot be forged and given an oath of office to cover it up. You know, they always say, it isn't a crime, it's, it was a misdemeanor, it's the cover-up that's defending, and that's what we got here, we got a cover-up, people, uh, running, scurrying, we're, we're trying to get the emails and see where the conversations were going, but obviously, they were, you know, we were told by your city attorney that she didn't need an oath of office, and when we showed the century code, she hurried up and got one, so obviously she knew that she needed one, and I'm not, not trying to get, this is not about getting people in trouble, now, now I'm even getting subpoena or summons, evidently I got a phone call from a policeman from Dickinson, I have a summons here, so I'm sure they're gonna try and do something on that level, so, you know, when you come up here and, and try and uncover things that are wrong, it's not easy, it's not easy, and right now, this is wrong, this whole thing that you're looking at, that's why I was kinda frustrated, I apologized, sitting there, listening to all this going back and forth, when in fact, you guys don't have the authority to change the century code, and you can't pass ordinances, ordinances are not laws, okay, they're not laws, I, I have that discussion with policemen all the time, doing the things I do, I'm out on the streets doing things, whether it's petitioning, it's political speech, so I'm always encountering a lot of times policemen, most of them, and your guys, your policemen are very, very good, very nice, and they listen, so that I have to compliment you guys, but this is wrong, we have to go back to what the century code says, we have to follow the century code, if it's not in your home rule charter, it's that simple, so that's, I'm, just, I appreciate your time.
I have one more question for Dossinger. I called you and asked you who our city auditor was, you turned around and sent me over to Christina Winkle, why is she doing your job?
She's not doing my job, obviously, she's providing us legal advice and addressing situations.
Asking you, asking you for who the city auditor is not legal advice, that's just asking you who our city auditor is.
And I also explained to you that those duties are shared between me and Linda Carlson, correct?
Yes, and then you send her.
So I did answer your question.
Yes, and then you, she sends me an email telling me not to contact you guys, that I need to go through her.
But I did answer your question, correct?
No, you didn't answer me, you, you didn't tell me who the city auditor was, you just told me what your duties were, but on your oath of office, it says that you are the city administrator slash auditor. So I just wanna read one more thing. Please stop, I'm reading one more thing, if any person elected to any state, district, or county, or other political subdivision, fails to qualify and enter upon the duties of such office within a time-fixed law, such office must be deemed vacant and must be filled by appointment as provided by law. I am asking that all of you that do not have an oath of office to step down, and we need to reelect and have another reelection, and I'm asking Corey Lee, because he's here, to step up and do the right thing for we, the people, because you guys are not, you don't have an oath, you can't fulfill these seats.
I would, uh, like to check the records, because I'm pretty sure I'm on camera signing the oath of office in twenty-two when.
It doesn't matter, was it, it's not on file.
Uh, they probably didn't give you the right one, but I'm pretty sure I have one.
I'm not here to make up excuses, I'm just showing you what I've got from Ms. Winkle here, and you don't have an oath of office on file.
Well, there must be one, because I signed it, so.
I know I took an oath of office as well.
Yours is current, John, she signed it, how can she sign your oath when she doesn't even have a oath herself, she signed it August twenty-third, let's not make up excuses, let's own up to it.
I don't think anybody's making excuses.
Mrs. Helgason, you understand why this amendment was brought forward, right? Because, because we, Mrs. Winkle explained that we weren't following the policy that we were supposed to be following.
Okay, I get that, but you guys aren't following the law, none of you have, have current, you guys know when you take an office that you have to take an oath, right? You need to defend, protect, right? I mean, you know that.
And we all did.
You know, I mean.
You can't have a bond without an oath.
Okay. You have any more questions for us?
This all came up because.
I want Corey Lee to come out and, and remove you guys that don't have oath of office, is what I want.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to come forward?
I'm not quite sure how to follow that, um, so my name is Jesse Hagenbeck, I'm here because, actually, you know, I've, people have hit on all kinds of things, but, you know, when you say that you were in the military for twenty-two years and you took an oath of office so many times, and you don't feel that it needs to be done every year, I would, guess I would tend to disagree, because there's a thing called complacency, and I feel that if you, you take something, you know, maybe more often, maybe it'll sink in, as to, you know, serving the people, whatever, the thing is, if you only take it once over your career, or once every four years, okay, you may not, it may not register, but if you take it more often, it may register, I guess, you know, it's just, sorry, I'm, this is one of the things, if, if you don't, if you don't think that it's important enough to take once a year, one time a year to take an oath of office, if you don't have enough time in one year to do an oath of office, I mean, what really, I don't know, I just.
I, I just have a question, Mr., uh, you said it was Hagenbeck?
Hagenbeck.
Hagenbeck, do you think I was complacent as a soldier?
No, I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is, there's certain instances, like, for instance, a couple days ago, my wife was pulled over by an officer taking my daughter to the emergency room, they said her taillights were out, that vehicle rolled off the line six months ago, it was an excuse, there was no reason to pull her over, to ask for her ID, to do any of those things. The thing is, is if you ask an officer to do it once a year, is that really a terrible thing? I'm just saying, we, you know, we, as, well, I mean, I'm not a public servant, my wife worked for the state, but, um, like I said, is, I just feel that the one statement, is, is it too much to ask to do it once a year? I don't really think so, I mean, you guys may think that, I don't know how busy you guys are, I really don't, I honestly am new to this whole scene, I just came down today to see what was said about this whole oath of office thing, and the only argument, I'm the, I mean, you have, these other people have pretty strong feelings about other things, and they've hit on a lot of things, my only thing is, is it really too much to ask to do it once a year and to make sure it's done? Why are we not getting held accountable for things? Why, why was this, why was this a law, and it went on for years and years and years, and it wasn't enforced, it wasn't done right? That is complacency. So, and like I said, I, that's the only thing I'm gonna hit on here, is just, if, if we think that it's too much to ask to, to do an oath of office once a year, I mean, really what?
So, Mr. Hagenbeck, I just, just, I, I wanna just kinda try to clarify what you're saying, so, you're, you're saying that like, you know, what you spend your time on is what you, you're demonstrating that you value that, so like, us doing the pledge of allegiance at beginning of the meeting, that's us demonstrating that we value what this country stands for, and we love this country and things like that, and so, what your argument is, is like, why not spend the time doing the oath of office, because you're showing that you demonstrate those, that, that you value those values?
Yes, showing that you guys understand that you're here for us, the people, and once a year doesn't seem like, and I'm not even saying it has to be once a year, I'm saying, to, to say, oh, that's a lot of work, like, okay, if that's what you're asked to do as a public servant, then do it. You know, that's the only thing I'm saying, I mean, if that's what's required, then do it, and we should be, well, I mean, again, I'm not the public, you got, you guys should be held accountable for not doing it if you don't do it, the, the thing is, is that if it's already a, a rule, a law, or whatever, then why hasn't it been getting done? I think there needs to be somebody to make sure that it is getting done, and if that's just, it is what it is, I mean, you guys can make rules, I guess, I don't know what this, I just came down here, I really didn't have anything prepared for you guys or anything, I'm just saying, the one thing that it hit on, I guess, I believe that there is certain people who need to take the oath, and it seems like you guys have rules as to who should be taking the oaths, my question is, is, as a police officer, why, why is this oath good for four years, or ten years, or whatever it is, I guess, I don't know how long it's good for, or whatever, but, um, I mean, hell, if, if it's gonna, if it's, needs to be done once a year, or, like I said, I feel as though, I mean, you guys should honestly take it as much as possible, I guess, just don't overly let it sink in, you know, I mean, I just, I just feel like some people are getting complacent in their jobs, and they don't feel like they actually, you know, are here for the people, they're just here for their duties, and they do whatever they do, go get coffee, I don't know what they do, uh, around here, I mean, all I know is what I see around my house, I've literally never stood on this floor before in my life, but I see the effects, and honestly, the oath of office is something I believe in, and the constitution is something I believe in, so I felt I had to be here, so, and if, I just feel like you guys should be taking it seriously, I mean, if you're gonna take an oath, and, like I said, you guys just, if you don't see the reason to do it every year, I don't know, maybe it just doesn't need to be, maybe you just don't need to be there, I don't know, I just feel that it's important, the oath of office, I guess, to, to make sure that people in the power chairs, you know, understand that they are here for us, that's all.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to come forward, have any comments?
Hi, my name's Chad Mathiason, and, uh, first off, I wanna thank you all.
Could you say that again?
Chad Mathiason.
Chad Mathiason, okay.
First off, I wanna thank you all, uh, I came down here basically misinformed, I wanna thank you for the clarification, my main thing was whether or not our officers would be required, or if it was voluntary to take the oath, that's the only thing I really cared about, as far as you guys, you take an oath, what they brought up, yeah, whatever, she provided an oath, you guys were a little late on it, I wish us citizens had a li- as much leeway as our commissioners and our police officers and our people in authority have, but we don't, so, again, thank you for the clarification, and could I, did I understand you correctly that this is going to get changed to where our law enforcement are required?
Yes.
Is that gonna get put in there?
Yes.
And as far as garbage man don't eat it, but, thank you, that was my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to come forward?
Mr. President, barring no other additional comments, um, I do wanna follow up on Mr. Mathiason's, uh, comments, um, to the point of why we had taken the necessary steps to, um, get the oath of office signed, that was based on recommendations and my reaching out to the AG's office, saying, we're out of a compliance, what do we do to get into compliance? And, and so, um, and, and I'm, that's the reality, so, what we do, when we know that we have to fix something, it's beho- it's on us to fix it, and so, that's what we did, you all voted and appointed us, and we've signed written oath of office, and the next step, and again, um, I also included in your packet a letter from the AG's office, uh, indicating that the steps and the actions that the city took was in compliance and necessary to rectify that issue, because, again, we needed to fix it, and there, there is no, um, uh, surprise about that, or anything of that nature, so, um, I just wanna point that out, and, and I do appreciate the comments of the individuals that came forward tonight, um, uh, and again, we will move forward with any current revisions as the code, as you, as the city commission requires.
So, Mrs. Winkle, I do have a question.
You bet.
So, I, I mean, I, I, my, my oath of office, my written one was in there, in, in the file, or whatever, um, but, so, century code, does it require, like, the written piece of paper, or does my video, does, does me taking the oath on video serve as documentation of me taking the oath?
I'd have to look, uh, Commissioner Odoman, I'd have to look at the, uh, specific code section, but I think it's, uses the term subscribed.
Okay.
But, um, the, the fact of the matter is, um, the city needed to get this addressed, and we did, and that was based on the, on the advice given to me by the Attorney General's Office, on getting this situated, so the city could decide what it wanted to do moving forward, and for the purposes of this meeting, my understanding is that we have decided to move forward and put it in the code to require it, and that's the way that I will draft it.
Okay. Anyone else, before I call, call the public comment?
Hello, my name's Jeff McDougal, I was listening to the Facebook as I was driving here, I'm, I got, was, got here late, but I heard Bobby Joe Halverson read from the century code, I believe, about the, uh, oath of office, and if it was not present or on file, that that office is vacated, I would think that anything that was done by those people without an oath should be null and void. Now, the question is that Bobby Joe asked also, um, are you going to do the right thing? I don't know who she was speaking to as I was driving, but, are you folks going to do the right thing, the people with the, um, oath of office? It's in the century code, it's the law, um, and Charles alluded to a few things, whereas, you know, government is given the, the ability to govern by the consent of the governed, it's the people, this nation is an amazing nation, and it's falling fast, and it starts at the smallest little towns by doing the right things, and this is a bigger town, but we all need to hold you accountable, and you need to do the right thing, and if it's in the law, then obey the law, that's my comment, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anyone else wish to come forward? All right, I will close the public hearing, Mrs. Winkle, since we need to have you do these amendments, will this be tabled, come back with the amendments? Right. I'd look for a motion to table, any amendments?
Abolled.
A motion to table by Commissioner Odoman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, Mr. Odoman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Soblock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This amendment is tabled um, until we, it is further amended and this is ordinance seventeen eighty-four. Our next public hearing is Chapter thirteen Code Amendment. This is pertaining to the Fire Chief oath. Mrs. Wanko?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I would recommend that you also table this, uh, as well because it's gonna run concurrently and consistently with what we're doing for Chapter two. Uh, so I would just recommend that you table it for now.
Okay.
Mr. President, just a point of order, cause it was, um, on the agenda as a public hearing. Do we still have to hold the public hearing if we're gonna table it?
I would recommend that, uh, no, I don't think that that's necessary. The public hearing will come and the public will have an opportunity to voice their, um, comments at the next meeting when we bring it back.
I'd move to table.
Second.
A motion to table by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mrs. Soblock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next public hearing is the twenty twenty-four proposed budget.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you is the proposed budget, before we had the preliminary budget when the revenue was taken back, um, in the other, um, commission meeting and work sessions. So, I have summarized, oh, sorry, can't go forward. So, general fund revenues by category, um, all the packets of the detail and then this PowerPoint is more of a summary of the budget going forward. So, the general fund revenues by category is just to show you what makes up our general fund revenues. And as you can see, the transfer ins is the biggest portion of that is fifty-seven percent. And your property tax is seventeen percent of that. What makes up the transfer ins or is the balancing the general fund are these items. It's fifteen million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that make up that transfer. And so, that's what supports the general fund, since the city sales tax, hospitality tax, future fund, oil impact, the ARPA and the highway tax and interest revenue. The general fund expenses, last year was twenty-four million point six and this year is twenty-seven million. And it's an increase of nine point five five percent. For the general fund, here is a list of what the actual departments and each one of their departments, um, from twenty-three to twenty-four budgets was proposed. It's either up or down, again, showing that it's, um, increase of nine point five five percent. General fund expenses by category, we have four categories in every budget. It is wage and benefits, it is your operations, it's your capital, if you have capital, and then if you have any transfers out. So, the biggest portion is always your wage and benefits. And then upon that is your operating on that. So, it's just a different way of looking at the way the expenses are in every department. With that, this is the twenty-four personnel. In the very beginning of the preliminary request, there was ten full-time requested, which is the full list. The three that are being recommended by staff for approval is the, um, evidence tech, non-sworn for the police department, the project engineer under engineering, and the marketing events assistant. Those are the three that are recommended and the amounts that are in there are including all benefits. And when we do a position that is open, we give the full amount of the health and, um, benefits in there. So, it could change, um, accordingly. With the personnel, um, this is the compensation breakdown. The total personnel is one point two million. So, this includes that two percent merit increase, the four percent COLA and then the three percent market adjustment or hard to fill adjustments. So, these are the totals as they break down. And then the next slide shows a percentage of the breakdown on that. So, your non-exempt is forty percent of that. One point two, your merit is your next one at twenty-six percent. And then the exempt, um, is ten percent and then your market adjustments, um, is the same. So, that's what that shows. Department budget by capital requ- capital requests. Um, this is a summary of the capital items that was presented to the commission during the work sessions and the preliminary. So, this is the totals, um, what is coming forward. So, the department budget is what's in their actual department. Other fund resources is the amount that would be for leases, capital, or it may come out of a different fund, um, like sales tax, or it may, um, be an encumbered amount. But just to show what the capital items, and then that, like I said, the details of the capital are in your packet. We have capital in progress or construction in progress. This is what funds all the projects that the city goes forward with. I thought this would be interesting to find out how much is used on the different funding sources that we actually use. So, um, as usual, gross production or the oil tax is forty-four percent of that. And then your local sales tax is the thirty-six percent because it, um, supports the capitals and stuff. But we do use loans through the state, um, and federal for the state, um, revolving funds. And then we also use funeral gr- federal and state grants on that. The subsidies, um, it's kinda hard to read a little bit of this, but what it's coming down to is the one percent funding source is funding one point three million, a little over. General fund supports fifty-three thousand in subsidies. The hospital tax is eighty-four thousand, which is lower than last year due to the fact that the downtown event is, um, not going to a specific vendor. It is now through our legacy square, so it stays within our funds. And then the next page is the half percent sales tax, which, um, is also a little bit lower uh, due to we do not have the library op- operation offset coming out. Um, they're better funded. And then we have the ARPA, which will be the seven hundred and forty thousand for this year. That's in the budget. And I will stand for any questions concerning the detail. And upon that, I would ask for an approval of ordinance, it would be seventeen eighty-six, um, to approve the proposed appropriations and tax levy.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Are there any questions for Mrs. Carlson?
And this is a public hearing also?
Yes. Commissioners, any comments before I open up the public hearing? And this is ordinance seventeen eighty-six, right? I think. Any comments, Commissioners? I guess I just have one comment. I wish the room would have stayed here because this is basically what we get for every budget, but then we get nothing but complaints about property tax and everything else. But, nobody ever stays for the budget. Not fun. Um, I've been on the city commission for nine years. Every budget workshop has been open to the public. And in nine years, two individuals have shown up. That were not city staff or commissioners. Nine years, two people. And those people were afraid that their subsidies were gonna get cut for their programs. But, again, this is what we shall deal with. I think, um, we are, we work hard every year. As soon, as long as I've been on the city commission, we have not asked for a dollar more. It's been five point seven million dollars running for nine years. Um, we tried to be very responsible with our dollars. The cost of, uh, uh, employing people has gone up, um, and the valuations change dramatically across the city. When you have facilities that are sixty, seventy million dollars in valuation that just get closed overnight, um, that's something we have to absorb as a city. Uh, it happened to us, Jason remembers this and a few others remember this, this happened forty years ago. People left and stuff was closed and the city has to find a way to deal with it. So, um, I'm just hoping that the people that are listening and are watching understand that city commission is working very hard to hold the line and, um, while, um, being able to find the funds to employ the people, we need to keep the city running. Um, and it, it gets a little bit tougher every day. So, I appreciate staff, all your hard work, so. Um, anyone else? Comments? Not? I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to come forward and has any statements on the proposed city budget, ordinance seventeen eighty-six? Anyone from the public? If you're watching online, seven zero one four five six seven zero six. Again, seven zero one four five six seven zero zero six. Any questions on the budget? Seeing no one from the public has any comments on the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four, I'll close the public hearing. This is the first reading of ordinance seventeen eighty-six. Commissioners, if you do not have any further comments or questions, I would look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the twenty twenty-four budget.
Motion approved by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Soblock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. This part here is public comments, not on the agenda. If you wish to come forward, please state your name. Let us know if there are any items that were not on the agenda you wish the commission to address. Anyone from the public? Yep. Come on up, it's your time.
Again, my name's Chad Mathiason. And, uh, one of the things that I was concerned about as far as the oath is, a couple incidents that have happened in Dickinson when it comes to the Dickinson Police Department and some of the officers. As far as what they're allowed to get away with when we investigate ourselves and find no wrongdoing. Uh, I have on a couple of occasions filed complaints with the Dickinson Police Department on the actions of some officers and excessive speeding, uh, joyriding, whatever you wanna call it. I understand that they're able to break traffic laws, but I also understand that they have to follow a policy of you have to have your lights and sirens on. First incident was Officer Blaze Schrader doing about fifty-seven miles an hour in front of Lincoln Elementary School during the day. The day before school started, the same day Dickinson Police Department put out on their Facebook page, drive safely in school zones. Now, Officer Schrader was disciplined as per the complaint that I had filed. But it brings up another incident involving an Officer Aaron Bates. And again, I'm not sure if either of these officers are still with the department. But, uh, I witnessed Officer Aaron Bates perform a traffic stop a couple houses down from my house. And this is where the constitution, the oath to it, does apply in my opinion. I've asked various officers whether or not they believe in the Fourth Amendment and whether or not that canine dog allows them to bypass the search warrant needed by a judge. Fourth Amendment states, you are free from illegal searches and seizures of your persons, papers, properties, and effects without, except with a warrant signed by a judge in which there's an investigation done, there's evidence brought to a judge. The judge gets to look at the evidence and then determine whether or not a warrant should be issued for the illegal, for the now legal search of a person's property. The reason I bring this up is because a drug dog was used in this incident. Uh, I also saw the individual drive away five minutes after the cops were done searching that vehicle, which makes me believe that that was a false hit by the dog. I then witnessed Officer Bates, I live at ten sixty-six Sims Street, right on the corner of Sims and Foster Drive, across from that lift station that's right next to Lincoln Elementary School. Foster Drive is a little half-block side street. There's, it, when I brought this to the attention of then Lieutenant Matt Hanson, I do believe now Deputy Chief Hanson, uh, congratulations to all of our officers that got promoted to. Again, he investigated. Because, the reason I called it, filed the complaint was on my camera, I watched Officer Bates whip an illegal U-turn in the middle of Sims Street after his traffic stop, no stoplights on. Take a left onto what would be tenth. Take another left onto Foster Drive in which he ripped down that Foster Drive, came right by my house, came out into the intersection, whipped a, I'll save my language, cookie, raced all the way back down Foster Drive in which, according to, uh, Lieutenant Hanson, only got to twenty-two miles an hour. Now, this is a turn. This isn't a straight road, this is a J-shaped road. And if you're going twenty-two miles an hour around that turn, I don't care if that's the speed limit, it's too fast. I do believe that Officer Bates was just blowing off steam for not finding anything in what I would assume is an illegal search. And when I was, when this was brought to the attention of the Dickinson Police Department, I was told there was no wrongdoing, he didn't speed, so nothing was gonna happen. And so, with the second incident with Mr. Blaze Schrader, that did happen. Couple weeks later, I get another police officer peeling in front of my house through that Osborne Drive. He comes out to Osborne Drive, runs the stop sign, races down the road, takes a right, races in front of Lincoln and St. Luke's. And I've got the police report, I've got the dash cam footage also, I FOIA requested all this stuff. What he was doing was, he was in front of a vehicle. He decided to go around the block to get behind this vehicle. Was it an emergency? Absolutely not, because he got the guy's license, he was, the stop was maybe three minutes long and he let the guy go. I do believe it's like a code three that is the only, there, there's very few circumstances which allows an officer to break traffic laws without notifying the public they're coming. Lights or sirens, one or the other, I do have it in their policy, North Quarter Century Code. Thirty-nine, ten, dash, three, under subsection, where am I at? Two. B, when a Class A authorized emergency vehicle is being operated in response to a reported emergency involving a possible personal injury, death, or damage to property and when giving adequate warning by use of oscillating, rotating, revolving, or flashing red, flashing blue lights in addition to and under the same conditions as the other colors allowed in the subdivision. I was told by then Lieutenant Hanson, his officers do not have to turn on their lights or sirens in an instance such as this. He exceeded the speed limit, he ran stop signs just to get behind a vehicle. Again, when it comes to these minor traffic violations, there are people in this country that are losing their life over a taillight out. I don't see why our officers have to put the public safety in danger just to pull somebody over. Again, all he had to do was, once he turned and decided to go above the speed limit, turn on your lights. Let the- turn on your lights, let the public know what's coming. Again, though, the reason I filed the complaint with Blaze Schrader is I've got it on my Ring Door camera, me pulling weeds on my sidewalk, my daughter riding her bike out towards, it's just a corner there, you know? Thankfully, a hundred percent of the time, she's going to make that corner, that one time she doesn't was when Blaze Schrader, fifty-seven miles an hour in a school zone, while my daughter's riding her bike. Again, he was disciplined, but I don't see how another officer who's doing the same stuff, I'm told he's able to do that. And I even showed Lieutenant Hanson at the time, because I got this from the police department. This is the letter signed, in which there's correspondence between Mr. Hanson and Sergeant Wallace stating that because I called twice, they have in here quote labeled me a habitual caller and to watch out in that area, because I've got it out for them? No, I put cameras up to keep my neighborhood safe, said if anything did happen, again, I live right across from the school, they want to come and ask me for some footage, I got you, I'll give it to you. I think, I like the cameras, I like the cameras up on the stoplights. Not a fan of Big Brother, but I get it. I would ask the commission to somehow be a little bit more authoritative towards our Dickinson Police Department when they are allowing their officers to break the law with no repercussions. Again, Aaron Bates, I have on camera twice doing this, he was never punished for either of them. How Blaze Schrader gets punished for doing the same thing, I'm not sure. But again, to have a lieutenant tell me they don't have to follow their policies and procedures, that's uncalled for. That's what brought my question with the whole oath. If they're not even going to put, abide by their policies and procedures, how can we expect them to abide by the oath they take to the Constitution? If an officer asks you to shut your mouth because they're talking, they violated your First Amendment. If an officer disarms you for any reason, for their safety, violating your Second Amendment, shall not be infringed, we're a constitutional carry state now. Just because I'm carrying doesn't mean they get to come and take it off my hand, off my hip. I don't really think, you know, we have to worry about soldiers being housed in our houses, so we'll leave the Third Amendment out of there. But again, the Fourth Amendment, there's not a cop in this city that cares about that Fourth Amendment, not one. Their entire goal now with the seatbelt thing is to get you pulled over to search you. That's all they want, it has nothing to do with public safety. As a matter of fact, a good bit of information is a frontline PBS story into the Arizona Police Training Academy, where they are training our officers. You go home, we get to go home if we choose to. We get to go home if we choose to. We have to obey, no matter what, doesn't matter if we're right or wrong, tell it to the judge. I thought we lived in a place where we were innocent until proven guilty, we're not. We live in a country where we're guilty until we prove our innocence, and if we don't have the money to prove that innocence, we're done. But again, to have the local law enforcement show me that thin blue line across their cars stating whose side they are on, and they will not cross that blue line, because when they need backup, they want their backup to show up. If you've got a police officer that rats out another police officer, they've been warned, you won't get backup. That's what that blue line is. I support the badge, I one hundred percent support the badge. I do not support the thin blue line, I'm adamantly against it. I'm ashamed it's on the side of our police cars. And then I will also add that pursuant to North Dakota Century Code twelve dot one dash seven zero two desecration of the flag, Dickinson Police Department has a big flag plaque in their main lobby with a thin blue line through it. I'm sorry, but that is defacing the flag. Put a real flag up there and get that blue line out of there, that's all I'm asking. But again, for the commission to, uh, maybe ask some questions as to why certain officers are allowed to break traffic laws and not follow their policies. I do have it, and if you guys would like the footage, I do have the footage on a flash drive here, dash cam footage and everything as to Aaron Bates, what he did, and did not get in trouble for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mathiessen. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. President, would you entertain a recess for a few minutes?
Yeah, um, if there's nobody else from the public, we will take a recess, so. Anyone else from the public? Not, we'll have a ten-minute recess. Okay, we'll move back into the regular session, public hearing is over. Public comments, let me find where we left off. I would think we're at HR, patiently waiting.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. First up on our list unfortunately is accountant. We will, um, have just recently opened up that, are taking applications for that position. Code enforcement officer, uh, we did hire someone, Victoria, and she has started already in her new role, doing a great job. Police officer, we've got five openings currently, two in the background stage. We'll continue to seek out candidates for that. Lateral police officer is another one we, we keep open until filled and try to find some experienced officers there. We had a series of internal promotions, um, in the police department, so patrol sergeant. We had two openings, Todd Wyler and Jayden Peters were selected for those roles. Corporal police officer interviews are tomorrow, so we'll spend a full day getting to know those, those candidates. Communication specialist, we have two openings, we did, um, make two hires there. Uh, records clerk had an opening there and that position has also been filled. Police lieutenant, internal position, and Brandon Stocky took that role. Animal shelter, we started taking some volunteers for that, Amy Braun has joined us as a volunteer for the animal shelter. Firefighters, we had just made two, two hires for a firefighter position. Street maintenance operator made a hire there, we're down to three openings for street maintenance operator. Street maintenance foreman continues to be a position we cannot get applicants for, so we'll keep working on that. Solid waste operator, we've got one in background, one in preboarding, um, so we've got quite a few openings there in solid waste. Mechanic position, we did hire someone for that position, so, um, again, our positions are starting to, um, be less and less, and we're getting some of them filled, and I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek, any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the HR report? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our monthly Public Works and Deputy Public Works Director Prowse will be presenting.
Good evening Commissioners, uh, President and Commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting the Public Works monthly report for August. Uh, first up is just a reminder of all the services that we offer at Public Works. If anything comes up within the city, feel free to please reach out to the Public Works Department with concerns. As far as our capital projects go, our mausoleum addition, um, is near substantial completion. Uh, there's a very, just a couple small punch list items that need to be completed yet. Uh, one of the biggest ones on that list was nine slabs of concrete that needed to be replaced because, uh, sealer was spilled on them and, uh, it wasn't coming out of the concrete. Uh, reminders to the public, the crips and niches are now for sale. Please reach out to the community development office and, uh, they'll help you purchase or set up for purchasing. Um, some special events that we held in August, uh, we did assist the IT department with running a cable, fiber optics cable from our Brine Building to the East Water Tank, so that they, it will support their antennas, um, throughout the city. Rachel Schumak, Shoemaker, uh, the recycling coordinator, her, hosted our first annual Public Works Kids Camp. Uh, I believe there was seventeen campers at that Public Works event. Uh, she had some assistance from our environmental compliance specialist, Leah Upchurch. Uh, it was a STEM-based program, uh, ran very well, the kids were, um, interacting amongst the Public Works Department. Each day they focused on a different area within Public Works, um, they went from building roadways to checking out the equipment. Uh, far right there, you can see they tried on the forestry gear. Uh, we are looking to make this an annual event, potentially doing it twice a year, um, in the months of May and August when school is out. We had our backyard bucket workshop on August nineteenth, topic was winterizing your lawn, which was presented by Kurt Frilick. Uh, reminder to the city, uh, general public, the next workshop will be held October seventh here at City Hall at ten AM, and the topic this time will be on composting. Another special event, uh, with our pre-treatment, or with our water utilities department, we had eleven members from the Dickinson Fire Department attend a training at our water reclamation facility. The goal of this training was to get everyone comfortable, uh, with the plant, its operations, and then just be, have for general readiness in a case of an emergency event would approach. Another special event that went on was our Public Works Director, Mr. Zurov, uh, attended his first ever PWX, which was in San Diego. Uh, it was a great conference, he states, with a lot of exhibitors and educational activities. He's currently on the board with the North Dakota APWA, and they are hosting their October meeting in Grand Forks. One of the things that they'll, uh, that they'll be doing or hosting again is the winter maintenance certificate training program. Uh, last year when they hosted that in, in, uh, North Dakota, there was over fifty attendees. So he did gather a lot of information, um, from this PWX conference. Moving to our service requests by the month, uh, we're currently at a hundred and thirteen, which rings our month, our yearly totals to eleven hundred and thirty-three service requests. How does that break down? Twenty-three of those are stormwater, uh, water sewer and stormwater related. Twenty-six of those, third, sorry, thirty-six of those are solid waste related. Sixteen are general requests, forestry's been busy with sixteen as well, and then single digits from there on. Our forestry department was very busy this last month with the assistance of the Buildings and Grounds Department. They planted thirty-nine trees throughout the city. City contractors are in the process of removing nine Dutch elm diseased trees. They're going to continue to prove, uh, we're going to continue to prove the, prune and trim the alleyway streets and the drainage areas. Uh, with the assistance of the street department, this summer, we were able to go through all the alleys that are east of Highway twenty-two and north of the, north of West Valard. So we're going to continue to go through those alleyways and try to widen them and, uh, so we can get cars through comfortably. And then they also assisted the Dickinson Park and Rec District by removing eight dead trees at the new, uh, Friendship Park, which is over, located right off of Tenth Avenue East. As far as our fleet department goes, our work orders are trending up a little bit. As Shelley alluded, we have a new mechanic which brings our fleet department to a fully staffed. We're at a hundred and eight work orders, bringing eight hundred and twenty-eight total for the year. How do those work orders break down? Uh, solid waste, leading with thirty-three, uh, work orders, police department right behind, twenty-two, street department nineteen, water utilities fifteen, and the remainder. As far as our fuel usage goes for the month of August, unleaded and clear, unleaded gasoline and clear diesel are within one gallon of each other. Dye diesel significantly down due to the fact of we don't run a lot of heavy equipment at this time of the year, most of that comes during the winter months. As far as our scale or our solid waste overall tonnages, definite increase of fourteen thousand three hundred for the month of August. Uh, the major contribution to this are the two large milling projects, the Eighth Avenue Southeast Project and the State's Avenue Project, all materials coming into our facilities are scaled, therefore driving that number up significantly higher. We are also starting to see a trend in household tonnages on the increase. Um, couple days a week, we're pushing over that hundred and eighty ton per day, uh, average, which generally speaking used to be about a hundred and fifty ton a few years back. As you can see, scale transactions are also on the increase, some of that is due to the millings that were coming in, uh, but then just overall, uh, residents and customers bringing materials in. The month of August, we did install new lights at the Baylor Building and the landfill shop. Significantly lit up our building, um, it was more so due to the safety of the traffic coming in and leaving our facility. Um, definitely has been a change of the atmosphere with just the addition of the lights. In August, we pumped seventeen million gallons of stormwater and twenty thousand gallons of leachate from our landfill to our, uh, water treatment facility for treatment processes. Moving into the street department, um, they've been very busy before the school, getting all the areas prepped. Um, they tried to get all the curbs and the sidewalks, crosswalks painted and thermal striped where needed. They are continuing to dura patch throughout the community. Um, this has been a topic of conversation, we've gotten a few calls on, on the rocks that are laying in our city streets. Uh, what we try to do is we're, we're dura patching to cra, uh, cover all the cracks within the streets before winter. Once that moisture gets inside those cracks freezes, it's going to create potholes come summer, come spring. So we're trying to get ahead of that a little bit, so we don't end up with a lot of pothole issues this next year. Um, and then the plan is to come behind with the street sweeper, uh, as time allows, and clean up, uh, most of those rocks and debris that have been left behind from the dura patch.
Mr. Prowse?
Yes?
I know I had, um, I had mentioned it to, um, Mr. Dossinger, I don't know if he had forwarded our conversation about, I know we're shorthanded, street and solid waste, and the one thing with the rocks, I have received complaints too. And, um, my suggestion was the possibility that we maybe put out an RFP, there's four or five sweeping companies now in town, and just to have them do a basic, maybe a Sunday night, one o'clock in the morning till seven AM, do the Valar tenth, twenty-first states, you know, where most, or where most of the patching has been going on. And get some of that up. I, I don't know, you know, if that's, is something we may consider or not, because we, we basically are sitting on funds anyway, because we're not hiring people. So if there's a private entity that can possibly do it, at least to provide a little relief. I saw the sweeper going out today, uh, he, he was racing, you know, down the road trying to, I'm sure he's trying to just keep up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think we only have one operator right now, right in the?
There, we're in the process of actually training operators on the sweepers. Uh, there's one that's very, very efficient at it, uh, we're working with two others at the current moment, so.
I, you know, it's just an idea that, you know, sometimes I think we have to, when we're short staffed, you know, we do the same thing with snow. We look to have a contractor come in. We may have to do that with some of these other positions, just till we can get, you know, fully staffed.
I'll visit with the director tomorrow about it, and I will also visit with our street supervisor to see if we can revise schedules, um, possibly as well. Maybe some of the employees would be willing to do some overtime, um, to help out as well, so. Any other questions up to this point?
No.
Okay, moving into our utility billing work orders. Um, obviously, we're very close to where we were in twenty twenty-two with eighty-three, bringing a total of six hundred and eight utility, uh, billing work orders for our water utilities department. Um, we're continuing to install commercial meter replacements for the MIU meter replacement program as well, and that's what's driving that number up. Southwest Water Authority, uh, we purchased a hundred and five million gallons of water in August, uh, bringing our total to six hundred and eleven, almost six hundred and twelve million gallons of water purchased from Southwest Water for the year. Uh, the reason there is, that we're trending slower or lower is due to the increased particip, precipitation that we've been receiving the past few months, which means less irrigation taking place on the lawns. Few projects that the water utilities department's been working on, uh, right there, they pulled out a forty-two horsepower pump, uh, that was faulty. Um, they ended up doing a complete replacement, this is on one of our twenty-three lift stations that are throughout the city. This is on one of our twenty-three lift stations that are throughout the city. On Lift Seven, they had North Dakota Sewage and Pump come up to assist with a pump repair, two bases, and the installation of a shield to divert the flows, as you can see in the photos there. And then they also had key contracting hired on to reline four bad manholes that we had located in the city. Basically, what they do there is they draw, they put in an epoxy coating, which will help preserve those manholes and make them last longer. As far as the total effluents sold from the water reclamation facility, sixty-nine million gallons went to Hart River, nine million was sold. We will be selling soon to the South Heart Golf Course. I believe that connection's made, and they are going to be taking water very shortly. Water Utilities Department, Water Reclamation Facility, I should say, was very busy in the month of August with the removal of the sludge from the sludge tanks. They hauled one hundred and ninety loads, six thousand gallons per load, bringing it to one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand gallons of sludge that got hauled out in the course of eighty-two hours. As for our callouts and overtime, forestry had three hours, Buildings and Grounds thirty, Street Department fifty-six hours, Water Utilities one hundred and eighty-one, and Solid Waste one hundred and sixty-three. If you look at the PowerPoint, you can see some of that pertains to Legacy Square. Others is just day-to-day activities and repairs that are needed. We do have four openings in the Solid Waste Department for operator position. Two operator positions available in the Street Maintenance Department right now. And then as Shelley had alluded to earlier, our Street Foreman position, which we are having a very difficult time even getting applicants for. We did hire some new staff in the month of August. Justin Berger, after a very short tenure away from the city, decided to come back to us in the Street Maintenance Operator Position. Zach Flannery came on with the Street Maintenance as well. And then Chad Heidebaugh is our Building Service Worker, doing custodial janitorial duties at the museum. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions for Mr. Prowse on the Public Works Monthly Report? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next item up, we have our monthly police report, and this will be handled by Police Chief Siani. Welcome.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. I have for you the Dickinson Police Department's August Monthly Report. Starting with the Dispatch Center to show what's coming in the Dispatch Center. Changed it up a little bit. A lot of the slides are the same. It gets a little monotonous. But it seemed fitting to start with the Dispatch Center. That's where all of our calls come in mainly. To begin with, Dispatch Center fielded five thousand and eighty-one incoming calls. Eight hundred and ninety-three of those calls were actually emergency-related calls for service. August calls, actual calls for service for the Police Department handled. Officers handled two thousand three hundred and eighty-five calls for service. This is in par with August of last year. Traffic safety, officers conducted three hundred and sixty-five traffic stops, resulting in two hundred and fifteen citations, one hundred and twenty-four warnings. Majority of those citations are, of course, speed-related. Accidents, we had seventy-eight total accidents. These included nine injury accidents, three pedestrian accidents. Pedestrian accidents were a little higher than normal. That those three pedestrian actions of the three, two of them involved bicycle. One of them was an actual person walking in the parking lot that was a near miss. The two bicycle accidents that were involved as pedestrians actually turned into arrests, one for a DUI, one for leaving the scene of an accident. Fortunately, there was no other serious injuries incurred during accidents. Total arrests, we posted one hundred and ninety-eight total arrests in August. Thirty-four of the arrests related to drugs. Twenty were related to crimes involving violence, to name a few. Arrest classifications, we had eighteen felony arrests in August, ninety-seven misdemeanors, and thirty-two infractions. Criminal investigations divisions were called out. Detectives were called out seven times in August. Some of the callouts related to three unattended deaths, one accidental shooting, and just to name a few of those, you can see the other things that they were called out on. They're getting called out still again at least once a week every month. They continue to, they opened forty-eight new cases in August. Of those forty-eight cases, they still carry an active load of right around forty-two cases. Some of the new cases investigated were involved five search warrants. We had three sex crimes, a couple of thefts, to name a few of the other cases that they're handling that came in. I want to mention our intel analyst, Janelle Grohl. She's assigned to investigations, and she ran eleven criminal history queries. She was able to identify four suspects, and she completed two criminal investigative workups for detectives. She's been instrumental in identifying some suspects in video footage and things where officers can't really identify the person. She's really good at actually, you know, pinpointing the picture to the name and getting that information to officers to facilitate the investigations. We had Detective Sergeant Linds. He traveled to Minneapolis during this in August to assist the Federal Bureau of Investigations in what's named Operation Cross Country. This is a yearly anti-human trafficking operation which spans the nation. Detective Linds is actually deputized by the FBI as a task force officer, and he has specialized training in ICAC, Crimes Against Children. The operation was facilitated by the FBI Field Office, and that Detective Linds's assistance with the FBI netted one adult victim was recovered in that operation. Two arrests, one gun was recovered. Felon in possession of firearm was charged out, and they did receive some intelligence for potential house facilitating human trafficking, which also had, was supposed to house a fugitive, a weapon, and some fentanyl. So that was a pretty successful operation. It's good to work with the feds in that area. We did also, DPD did team up with the North Dakota Prolem Probation Southwest Narcotics Task Force, conducted a warrant blitz of sorts. During that blitz, seventy-five warrant attempts were, seventy-five attempts at warrant service were made. Sixteen warrant-related arrests were happened. One probation violation, one felony drug paraphernalia arrest associated with that warrant operation. Notable incidents, we have a license plate reader success story. We received a tip from the US Marshals that there was a subject that was in town that had federal warrants. The license plate reader will actually hit on that license plate, putting him in the area of, by T-Rex Mall. Officers converged on that area and did find that vehicle in the parking lot. It resulted in the arrest of Randall Sam. He had federal warrants for aggravated sexual abuse of a minor and abusive sexual contact of a minor. He was taken into custody without incident. He also had a female traveling with him, Brandy Goodbird, who was also arrested at the same time for a misdemeanor burly county arrest warrant for possession of controlled substance. On another incident, thirty-one-year-old Dickinson woman sustained a non-life-threatening gunshot wound to her finger and her thigh. One bullet did pass through her finger and hit her in the thigh. That resulted in the arrest of a Serge A. Cook for C felony reckless endangerment and discharging a firearm within the city limits. I will note that we do have a number of accidental discharges, which results in injury, and you'll be surprised at how many people say they were cleaning their weapon at the time of the accidental discharge, and yet there's usually no cleaning supplies found at that time. So fun little fact for you. Behavioral health, DPD investigated ninety-three behavioral health-related incidents, seventy-five associated with welfare checks, three suicidal threats. Of course, August brought the schools back in session. So tail end of August, the school resources, school resource officers were busy. They responded to eight calls for service at Dickinson High School, resulting in three juvenile summonses. Sixteen calls for service at the Dickinson Middle School, and five calls for service at the elementary schools. Records, fingerprinted sixty-seven individuals. Thirty-two sex offenders were registered, and sixty-two warrant summonses were processed. Brings us to the animal shelter. Animal Control handled one hundred and seventy-seven calls for service, with ninety-nine of these calls being related to stray or running at large, which is typical for their numbers. Hundred and two animals consisting of fifty-six dogs and forty-six cats were impounded. Only eleven of the hundred and two animals impounded remained in the pound at the end of August. Training, staff posted one hundred and seventy-three hours of training in August, ranging from advanced SRO training to car seat technician training. We also had four officers attend a North Dakota Peace Officers Convention in Devils Lake, North Dakota this year. That Peace Officer Convention was attended by Corporal Jaden Peters, Officer Bailey Tulius, Officer Andy Sidum, and Officer Alex Schroeder. They spent four days in Devils Lake, training and competing with officers across the state. Team DPD placed third place in a pistol team event, a four-gun event, and in the K-9 event. I'll make a note that the third place was one slip on our K-9 team, brought them down to third place. And the other thing is that most agencies across the state are utilizing the Reflex red dot sites, which gives them a distinct advantage in any pistol shooting competition.
Adapt and overcome.
Community relations, August considered we had coffee with a cop hosted by DSU. Officers attended a number of back-to-school open houses. Instruction was provided to Dickinson High School Law Enforcement Class consisting of fifteen individuals. And August is also always our National Night Out Month. As far as National Night Out, we did have hundreds from the community, enjoyed free hot dogs, and interacting with DPD staff and vendors at the Rec Center. There were K-9 attack team demos. We had a bouncy house out there. Fire Department did a very popular Jaws of Life demo over there as well. That was all part of the entertainment. It was well-attended, once again. August also brought the graduation of three new recruits from the Law Enforcement Training Academy. This was a mix of a virtual academy that had a few weeks of actual in-person training, which is, I think that detracts from the training itself being in virtual for them, and hopefully the Law Enforcement Training Academy. That was a result of the construction being conducted at the Law Enforcement Training Academy. Hopefully, that construction will get finished here in the, by the time we get some more recruits to send to the academy. Those recruits were from left to right, Chris Olson, Araya McClintock, and Coleman Bodel. I believe they were in front of the commission for a swearing-in at one point. We also had a promotion that occurred in August, which was Sergeant Brandon Stockey was promoted to lieutenant, and he will be overseeing the Patrol Division in the future. So with that, I will be open to any questions.
Thank you, Chief Siani. Any questions? All right. Thanks so much for the report.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, we'll move into community development. We have a geotech work contract. Mr. Skolczek?
Good evening, Commissioners. So there is a RFP that was put out for two thousand and twenty-four various geotechnical projects, and for that RFP, we received three proposals. In that case, we're recommending award to American Engineering Testing Incorporated. Included in that, in that RFP were four individual projects. One was the two thousand and twenty-four Water Maintenance Lead Service Line Replacement Project, Sim Street Phase Two Project, Public Safety Training Center, and the two thousand and twenty-four Road Maintenance Project. You can see the breakdown per project, how those projects will be allocated cost-wise, and then ultimately total proposal fee, fixed fee of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and zero cents. Did put in the scoring matrix of how we ultimately scored. Much of the scoring went on the project understanding, issues, and approach. And ultimately, the goal out of this is to get the geotechnical work completed prior to the ground freezing. And so right now, that was one of the criteria, and that's currently, if awarded, or if approved tonight, they're tentatively on the schedule for middle to end of October to complete all the field work. Overall, for bundling these four projects together, which are part of the two thousand and twenty-four budget and ultimately anticipating approval of those, intent was to try to minimize costs for mobilization and overall have a, provide a economy of scale and then ensure continuity within projects. With that being said, engineering staff recommends approval.
We have it in our agenda as a report, but we want, we want this as something to approve.
I have consideration to approve on mine.
No, if you click on the PDF, it says staff report.
Oh, yeah.
So, but do we have a task order with it or just assign a resolution?
For some reason, the proposal wasn't attached. I apologize on that.
Okay.
It's available. It was, I apologize, it was reviewed by legal, but somehow I slipped through that. I'm not sure why that didn't get attached, so.
Mrs. Winko?
Mr. President, I would just say that because the agenda indicates a consideration to approve, that the motion would be to approve the proposal as presented. No resolution required.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
So we have this contract for geotech work with a motion to approve by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Any none? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chairwood's aye, motion carries. Next up, we have District Track One, Block One. And this will be presented by Community Development Director Skolczek.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Track One, Block One, this is a quick claim deed from Venture Commercial LLC to the City of Dickinson. This is a point-six acre parcel that was plotted with the district development. Part of the development agreement that was signed and approved by the City Commission on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two was that the stormwater detention ponds for this project would be located or constructed within this specific tract. And then the next one on the agenda, these are like tracks for quick claim deeds. And then ultimately, these would be quick claim to the city. That was a component of the development agreement. We do have one condition on this, and have been in contact with the developer, and they've agreed to this. We're actually going to meet out in the field tomorrow, late morning, as long as all schedules line up. But there's just a little bit of minor regrading that we asked them to do, and then reseed and erosion control. And it's not over the entirety of the area at all. It's just a few areas that just didn't grow vegetation, so minor erosion, nothing substantial. So with that, engineering staff and community development staff recommend approval, again with the condition that once they complete the work according to our expectations, that we would then file this quick claim deed.
Any questions for Mr. Skolczek? Now I look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further discussion? Any none, we'll vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chairwood's aye, motion carries. Josh, you have this, I guess it's another pond, right?
Yeah, so this is just Track One, but of Block Two. Same district development, just on the south side, just south of Fifteenth Street that it was extended, and that work is currently wrapping up right now. Identical circumstances, this is a quick claim deed from Venture Commercial LLC to the City of Dickinson, Track One, Block Two, containing approximately point-six-eight acres. And again, as per Section eight point B of the development agreement, which was approved by the City Commission on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, this and then the other previously approved quick claim deed were ultimately part of that development agreement. And so same exact condition then. And again, I want to stress this, pretty minor erosion, it's nothing that substantial. But nonetheless, we just asked them, if we're going to
but nonetheless, we just asked them, if we're going to accept it, we might as well accept it in good condition or the best possible condition to minimize maintenance for public work. So, a little bit of regrading, some seeding and erosion control to be added, and again, that's anticipated right now that tomorrow, late morning, we should be meeting in the field with the owner. So, with that, engineering and community development staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions on this agreement? This quick claim need.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Bear?
Josh, I have a question for you. Because I live off of 15th Street, there's times when I've seen, when we have heavy rain, that that pond fills up, like in the wintertime, it was flowing over. Is that deep enough to be able to handle what they're going to build in there?
Not knowing exactly the circumstances that were occurring, there may have been some ice jamming or some other circumstances if it was during the winter. We did have a record snowfall as well. Could have been a host of different things. Could have just simply filled up with snow, and then we had so much wind that it literally was like a block of ice in the bottom of the pond.
Well, I know it kind of was cracking down the sides, so I was wondering, is that, will that be?
Some of that erosion repair is what we're referring to.
That's what you're taking care of here.
Yeah. As far as detention volumes and whatnot, it met city engineering staff requirements at the time the development was approved, so.
I think the vegetation hadn't set in, and what you, I saw that same erosion. It's just, there was so much water, and it just ate a hole right through it. So, I think once there's, there's some kind of vegetation, there's some footing, it'll, it'll hold that hopefully a little bit better. I still, you know, in the future going forward, I, we've been talking tonight about many things that we need to do, you know, we need to work on updating some of our code and some of, you know, outdated home rule stuff. And one of the things that, we talked about this in the past, are these ponds within the city, that somehow we need to turn these into, moving forward, turn them into some kind of things that aren't eyesore. I'll just put it that way. You know, many other communities have done it. I think we just need to step up and find a solution. So, and these, these will be a challenge too because of their location, but I, except, you know, moving forward, I think this is going to be a great addition to the community along there, and hopefully they'll spur some development along 15th on that land that the public school owns. So, I can't remember, did I, did we get a motion? I think we.
I'd move to approve.
Okay. Motion approved by Commissioner Otterman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move into your monthly report.
And again, good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. So, the Engineering Community Development Monthly Report. First thing I want to start off with is acknowledging the staff within the team. Victoria Bagley was recently hired as a code enforcement officer, and with that hire, as was acknowledged by the HR Monthly Report, that actually fulfills our full staff. So, that's a very positive thing to move forward with. We have not been fully staffed since I've been on staff with the city, which has now been just over a year now, so. Talking in relation to building and codes, so as you can see, both the number of individual permits for this year, as well as the total fees that have been picked up and paid for, are up. Some of that is especially related to the fees. There are a handful of fairly large commercial or industrial-related development that has, that has occurred, so that ultimately explains related to the fees, but definitely positive signs, both in the city limits and within the county. We do the building inspections for Stark County as well. Related to planning, so right now, we're ultimately working on a number of different things. One is the South Dickinson Area Study that was recently approved by the commission. We actually have a project kickoff meeting for that next week with the consultant that was awarded that contract. So, here to get going on that and get that information, then ultimately to roll up into the comprehensive plan, which is the next item on the, on there. So, comprehensive plan, working through the contract negotiation phase. All things have been submitted to the North Dakota Department of Transportation, and then ultimately to the Federal Highway Administration, and that's related to that grant that we have for that. So, they just want to compare what's in and out of scope for that grant, and then make sure that everybody's in agreement, and then ultimately move forward. Right now, I'm crossing my fingers for the next city commission meeting. We can actually have that contract on the agenda. And then, comprehensive plan, transportation master plan, those are basically bundled together as a single document and single ultimate report, so. Related to engineering, number of projects listed, a couple notable ones, you know, a number of them are now complete, and so it's nice to see projects coming off of the list and ultimately now being, now being completed. Projects that are either in design or preliminary engineering phases, again, number of, number of different projects in the list there. The West Business Loop Project, which is intended to be a similar design to the East Business Loop that was completed a few years ago, which also includes the two roundabouts. There's actually a public involvement meeting that is currently scheduled for October 30th, 2023, from 5:00 to 7:00. And more information will be coming out on that, but I believe the venue will be the Rural Fire Hall on South Main. So, additional information coming out on that as soon as that's available, so. And for our geographical information system, or GIS team, so there's some new features through the GIS utility data, so we can now, any companies that have the capabilities to ultimately utilize this type of data, they can actually pull it straight off of our website. So, if they have certain key data in other areas, they can actually just extract that data and then utilize whatever it is that they need, turn those layers on and off and whatnot. So, it's a really, it's a really good feature for them to ultimately be able to use beyond just a visual aspect. They can actually then incorporate that into engineering and design, whether it be for development or capital improvement projects. That alleviates the need for us to ultimately extract that data and then send it over to them. Working on trying to combine some data sets and whatnot, some of the major point features and improvements that we're working on there, specifically to our lead service lines, and just validation of all that information, making sure that best available data is compiled and that we're not working off of a series of different lists, that that's all in a single, single data set. Those that utilize the mapping services, just before the Labor Day weekend, we ultimately had an outage of our, of our services, our GIS services. The server went down, there were some issues, stuff like that. So, it did take a couple of days to get all that back up and running, but I just want to give some acknowledgement to Darrell, as well as our IT Director, Aaron Meyer. They worked pretty diligently for a couple of days there, getting that all back up and running. And Darrell actually had planned vacation, and he postponed that to get the service back up and running, so. With that, stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you for that monthly report. Any questions, Commissioners? Okay, that's the end of the regular agenda, if I'm correct. Looking through here. Move into commission. Commissioners, do you have anything that you wish to address or bring up, any concerns? I have one item that had been asked to be put into public record. We have a letter from a concerned citizen, and I'd asked Mr. Hirschfeld to stay. We'll just enter this letter as record that they could not make it this evening. Their concern is purchase of an old business within town, which is the Dickinson Press business. Their property tax increased 32%. They are asking for us not to, or to consider not increasing their property tax because they are a daycare facility and a dance facility. I guess what I would ask, that city staff reaches out and, much like the abatement we had earlier, that they go through that process, that they are aware of the process, that they, and that this is the fully explained. Mr. Hirschfeld, have this, the Moser Holding Company, have they approached you?
Mr. President, Commissioners, yes, we've been in contact recently in the last week or 10 days or so.
Okay. So, you're aware of their situation, and I guess maybe some further explanation, they had stated in their letter that they are aware that, you know, other businesses in town have increased about 3%. I think that's a little low on the average. Probably closer to 5, or am I incorrect in that?
I'm not sure where they got that number from.
Okay. I may be just taking that off. But again, it's from the Kindergarten Central Artistic Exchange Dance, and they are concerned about their, their total valuation and their increase of property tax. So, just I will make sure that this gets entered into public record and that, that they know that, that the city commission's aware of their situation, and then that Mr. Hirschfeld, you know, explains to them the process if they do want to challenge your valuation of their property.
And that was a big part of our discussion, was the formal and informal process for that, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Commissioners? Now, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.